All set. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would someone move item 1.02 to approve the agenda?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, and abstentions. Pass 5-0-0. Item 1.03, our evacuation procedure in the event of an emergency, you can go out this door, which is probably your best bet. If you can't go through that door, you need to go through the door behind us and turn to your right and straight out and away from the building. Would you now join us in the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.05 is public forum. And first up this evening is William Miller here representing NISBA. He is also our Area 5 Director.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to explain these awards are not given lightly. These awards are given to people who have spent a numerous amount of hours and time serving on a Board of Education and serving children in New York. And so we look at giving something special. So we have a Crystal Plaque Award that we give. I'm sorry we didn't put your guys' ears on there, but we weren't quite sure how long. But I thought that we would bring these up and we'd like to present them to you. David, if you wanted to come up, there is a stand in here for him. And it's presented to David Cordell from us with deep appreciation for your outstanding service to New York State's public school children. And we certainly appreciate it. I know he's spent a lot of years. You and I go back a ways, so we all know what's going on.
Dave, one more.
Okay, Robin, you're next. And it says basically the same thing to Robin Griffin with deep appreciation for your outstanding service to New York State's public school system. You've done a great job. You and David both spent many hours, sleepless nights probably, you know, working for the betterment of children in New York State. And New York State would stand to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And one this way. And one this way. Very nice.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I just have two to read in. If you'd like them read now or I could read them in Superintendent's report from other board members in the region?
Wherever you want to do it.
Wherever you'd like me to. Do Kathy and Ms. Trobridge first?
Okay, all right.
All right.
Our next up is Kathy Trobridge.
I just wanted to come here on Robin's last night, Mrs. Griffin's last night at the board and just say how proud I am that I'm her friend and how hard she worked for the students of this, how hard she worked for the students of this district for many years. And it's sort of a bad time to be here because I wanted everyone to know that I feel like I know everybody in this room because as a good leader, she always gave credit whenever I gave her a compliment on something new the school has done. She gave credit to everyone but herself. I knew how hard they worked, what they did. And it's a beautiful thing to leave because she was always good and she always shared. And I think the school will miss her. And I still think that because of her and the many administrators that have come, we have the best school district around.
Thanks, Cam.
I've got two statements or two acknowledgements to read in. One is from John Schelman, let's see, Schelman, who's from the Bosse's Board as well as Sandy Creek and a board member of many. This is for both Robin and Dave. "Thank you for the opportunity to write some remarks regarding two very strong friends of education in Oswego County. I'm truly sorry that conflicts prevent me from being there to honor these two outstanding board members and deliver my remarks in person. What can you say about two outstanding board members who have devoted so much of themselves to educating the children of the Fulton City School District as well as Oswego County and our entire region in general? Dave Cordell has been a fellow board member and a colleague of mine on the City Bosse's Board as well as the Oswego County School Boards Association. He has brought to those boards his experiences as a school administrator. His experiences, expertise, and perspectives on issues have made him invaluable. He is a credit to the Fulton City School District. He has never let issues of the moment cloud his vision of ultimately being there for kids. He has been a great advocate for education, lobbying with elected officials, attending state and national school board conventions, law conferences, and workshops whenever possible and wherever available. Dave is both a friend and a colleague, and I will treasure the time we served together. I have learned so much from Dave. I was thrilled and happy for him when he was honored as Oswego County's Outstanding Board Member of the Year a few years back. He was very deserving of that honor. I will always consider Dave a treasured friend and I'll miss him as a board colleague. Robin Griffin is nothing short of a legend. When you look at board service in Oswego County, she's been a mentor to so many people who have chosen to become board members and I'm no exception. She is one of my best friends and I could not do what I do were it not for the example she has set. Robin and I came to the board's service in the same year. Over time, we have occasionally agreed to disagree on matters. We both have developed the ability to laugh at many of those disagreements in retrospect. More than anything, our occasional differences of opinion led us to have tremendous respect for one another. To know Robin Griffin is to experience true leadership and true dedication to her beliefs and to her cause. Robin has a focus. She turns challenges and opportunities, both for herself and for those around her. Her belief that failure is not an option becomes contagious. She never loses focus, always understanding that we are here because of the kids and families who we serve. Robin has never betrayed those who have pulled the lever next to her name in a voting booth. She is a true friend to the Fulton community. Over the years, her support for education never wavered. Elected officials definitely know Robin's name and listen when she speaks. They had better. I have enjoyed serving with Robin Griffin over the years. She is a special lady who tells it like it is, whether that be pleasant to hear or not. We are losing one of the great treasures in board service in New York State. With Robin's retirement, education is losing a great friend and ally. I can only hope and I'm confident that her voice will continue to be heard in support of public education despite her leaving board service. Robin Griffin, my forever friend, you will be missed and cannot be replaced. John Schelman, President of the City Bosse's Board of Education and the President of the Sandy Creek Board of Education." And then the other is from Donna Blake. "Dave Cordell, I cannot tell you when I first met Dave, but it was when he was newly minted Dad. The best thing about Dave as a board member is that he realizes there is so much more to the world of school boards than the meetings in your home district. Dave always has been an active lobbyist, not only for his district but for the schools of Oswego County. He is faithful attendee of the NISBA convention, the NSBA convention, and has lobbied for us at the county, state, and federal levels. Enjoy your retirement, Dave. You have earned it." And then to Robin Griffin. "Robin and I actually met when we were in high school, when she briefly attended Hannibal. I met her again as a new board member and I was overwhelmed by her knowledge and competence. She was the first person to tell me that board service is much more than a monthly or bimonthly meeting. I followed Robin and the Fulton Board of Education around for many years as I went to trainings, conventions, meetings, and lobbying events at the local, state, and federal levels. What can I say? They finally gave up and adopted me. Robin was even my wheelchair attendant and kind support person. Through a couple foot surgeries, laugh out loud. I have also considered Robin to be my mentor and I hope we can enjoy our retirements, me next year, together to Donna."
Thank you. Okay. That concludes public forums. So now we're going to move on to item 1.06 to approve the June 13 regular meeting minutes.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions. Pass. Pass 4-0-0. Or 4-0-1, excuse me. Are there any questions regarding the president's report? I can tell you that Mrs. Amel Gore has been, was very busy preparing for the reorg meeting. And I believe she's got a good handle on what the board needs to do next.
Well, I learned from a couple of the greats, so.
All right, I'm going to turn this meeting over to Superintendent Palvino.
Okay, thank you. So our first item this evening is our Title I Parent Involvement, Family Engagement Policy. Ms. Tiffany, if you could talk. Ms. Geitner's not here this evening. She would have been right up there with Ms. Tiffany, but this is right in Ms. Tiffany's wheelhouse. So, thank you, Ms. Tiffany. That's perfect.
At least a stand, okay. This is pretty brief tonight. You'll see in your backup the Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy. This is reviewed annually and we're looking at tonight prior to adoption at the reorg meeting coming up in July. It is a required policy under Title I. So each element in our policy is based on state and federal guidance. You also have a checklist in backup as well so that you can see that we are meeting the criteria there. There are really just minor changes this year, more so in practice than policy. So policy adjustments were made based on district coherence council meeting feedback, surveys of site-based and parent group members, PLC associate surveys, and Fulton Family Fund Day and UK Family Night events feedback. Again, most of those changes are in practice, not policy. Some minor changes that you will see, meetings and activities by the, it's titled FCSD Family Engagement Advisory, that will now be facilitated by two family engagement coordinators. There, it's an ENL teacher and a school counselor in our district and they're doing some nice work already, really working on a needs assessment with the goal of determining the barriers to access in family involvement and engagement. So they have started this work, but moving forward, they will really be the facilitators of that group. Another change is the addition of our expansion to our contract with Peaceful Schools. A few months ago, we started, Erin Fiorini started with us and she is our bilingual family engagement specialist. She's been doing a nice job working with our families who speak a language other than English and that's different than our English language learners in the classroom. We also have families who speak different languages and really connecting with them, making sure that they have adequate resources and are involved in the decision-making process within schools. And lastly, you'll see a mention of College and Career Exploration Platform, Parent Portal. That is our Zello platform. We used to use Naviance, which is, we're now using Zello. It's for our students to be able to explore college and workforce opportunities. It's a great platform. We're hearing wonderful feedback from students and teachers alike. We are looking to explore more of the Parent Portal features so that families can have really a robust experience and network as well. And that is all I have for updates. Are there any questions?
The only question I have is, do you keep data on how many events are offered in a year and how many people attend the event or take advantage of those opportunities?
Yes, we do have sign-in sheets for any family engagement or involvement event that we host. I don't have that data on these.
Well, that's okay. What I'm more curious about is just, so your team would be reviewing, the team would review that to determine whether or not we're meeting with success so that adjustments can be made?
Correct. And so we do look at attendance. Are we reaching, not only what is our number? We're looking to expand here, but who is coming? And maybe more importantly, who isn't coming? So that we can see where are those barriers and how can we make sure that everyone has a voice at the table?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tiffany. Dr. Lisi, we're going to go through our draft of the Fulton City School District Districtwide Safety and Security Plans. This is the annual document.
Great, thank you, Spock. Yes, the District Safety Committee went through the current district-wide school safety plan and reviewed the 2223 with the idea and plan to move that forward for 2324. There were minor revisions in the current plan. One of the things that we did have to look at this year was that the state now requires that we include pandemic response as well as a remote learning plan. So we added those to the current plan. There are links in that for review. The current plan will be posted on our website after tonight's meeting for public forum, which is scheduled for July 25. The review of this plan, I will comment, was in anticipation of some comprehensive changes moving into the fall. So what we're looking to do with the next plan for the following year is to incorporate that as part of our plan. Without getting into too many details, we are changing some of our technological structures for security. We don't want to obviously share those details, but we're changing some of the technology to help us, our community feel safe in our schools. And so we're working towards those goals. Looking forward to doing that as well. I will comment also that the committee was made up of community stakeholders, our first responders, our SPOs, representatives from each building and so on. So we had great representation in the group and I think we did some great work in reviewing the plan. So with that, the plan now is on July 25 to have that, have a public forum and to have it approved by the board, the following board meeting.
So I have a question.
Sure.
My question is, we have this wonderful plan and I'm wondering how we are following up to find out for ourselves, is our plan being implemented as written versus we have? I'm a little worried about having a document that people look at and then forget about.
Sure. Can you give an example of an area where we might? It's accountability that you're asking about. So what areas might we be accountable? How might we do that?
Doors, hardening our doors. Are we sticking with we use a main door or are we willy-nilly with doors people are using?
I think a lot of our communication this year, we've received a great deal of feedback from folks regarding how doors are open or they've been held open with things. In fact, I have a collection of things that held hard door open at junior high in my office. So we get those reports. We make sure that we let folks know that is a safety and security risk and that we can't allow those things to happen. We have identified main entrances and of course, we use the Raptor system to make sure that identifications are checked and so on. So we do go through the process. But with all of those things, it's a constant reminder. It's communication with folks and our stakeholders in general. So yes, accountability is very important with security.
So I, but I guess my question is, is do we have a system to, so that we're checking on our own accountability to the plan that is in place?
Sure. The system's a system reporting, so it's got to be about communication. So I don't know if we necessarily have a checklist every day is a door closed.
Right.
But we have to communicate on a regular basis that this is our system and this is a system we have to follow for the safety of our students and staff.
So then my last question is, are we confident that we have shared with all of our stakeholders in our buildings the why behind the rule so that maybe they will think twice before they use a door they're not supposed to be using or let someone in in a door other than the primary door?
Confident, no. I think that's a message that needs to be repeated on a regular basis and has to be repeated constantly. We learned that this year.
Yeah.
We've gone through the training with staff on a regular basis and we certainly communicate it often. But our lesson is that it continues.
Well, I think with our students too, not just the staff. I think our stakeholders and even our parents and grandparents, so that people aren't offended. But there's a reason behind why we've hardened our door usage.
Oh, when I say stakeholders, I mean students as well. There are stakeholders as well.
I just wanted to be certain. Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. Any other questions?
Yeah, maybe just as a follow-up to Robin's. In terms of the plan and any modification, after every incident of a school shooting, I know there was a lot of conversation, a lot of training for administrators, board members everywhere following the evolving. What have we learned from that that has informed our plans?
That's a great question. I think we've learned quite a bit. You can never learn enough from those. But we did follow that up. I'll just recall one meeting in particular that we have with the administration. And we went through the evolving incident in particular, probably to the point at which we shouldn't have, but we did. And that was painful to do so. I think we learned some valuable lessons from that about, number one, how important it is that we listen to the community. And that was the number one lesson we learned from the evolving is that so many folks knew something was off prior to that event and communication might have been able to stem the tide there a bit. And so that, one of the things that we changed as a result of that is that we implemented the See Something, Say Something protocols on our website and created a line that you could call anonymously so that it tips to help us understand that there might be a threat. And I think some of our focus may have changed a little bit too. I mean, we try to take a very broad approach to safety and security in terms of the social, emotional aspects as well as physical safety. So we try to find a balance with those. I think we learned that from that lesson as well. Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I would add on Fridays, we have a standing Friday administrative meeting, every Friday actually, at 7:00 a.m. And one of the things we built in is a safety and security component of the agenda every time. So if there were any drills that were done, for example, that we asked administrators to comment on those drills, how they went, what did they learn? The other thing, if there's any incidents, we ask them to debrief the group on the incident and learn what they learned from them. So we did that a number of times. So that's a great way to not only reflect on what we're getting out of drills, but also if this went on at School A and obviously they got the communications, but they didn't get all the details. And so it's an opportunity for us to reflect on that to say if we had something similar at School A or B, how would we approach that? What did we learn from the last one? And then we also can share that at the Health and Wellness and Safety Committee as well. But that's one of the things we built in this year was those Friday meetings. And we built that onto the agenda, which I think is helpful.
And I think, just to add one last comment to that, our practices, protocols, and technologies that we're implementing in the fall are a direct result of that particular incident and conversations that we've been having.
Very good.
Any other discussion? So we'll do the, so as Donna said, we're doing right before our short second meeting of the month in July in case we have to do, you know, appointments, things like that. We're going to schedule them that same evening, like a half hour, 45 minutes before the meeting. So that's what we're going to do. And then it'll come back August 8th to the board and then we'll post for the state by the end of August and has to be posted to the state. So we're well within our timeframes. Thank you. FCSD Code of Conduct update. Ms. Tiffany, our Director of Student Support Services.
Thank you. And you will see in your backup that there's a one-page summary as well as the draft code of conduct. Generally speaking, there were very minimal adjustments made this year. We did meet with a group of stakeholders including representatives from students, parents, student support service personnel, teachers, FTA president, administrators, and community partners. So we met a few times this spring reviewing our code of conduct. And similar to what I was just sharing about the family engagement, we recognized that the concerns or suggestions were more in areas of consistency of practice than the policy itself. We did, we put this in front of our student advisory board, which is comprised of students in grades fifth grade through 12th. And those representatives really looked through the 42 pages, I think, document and said, this makes sense to us as students. And they're very vocal when it doesn't. What's in writing makes sense to us. We want to make sure that the practice is consistent and that we're really, that everyone is following through with consistency. So for the purpose of policy, the only updates that we have for you tonight, proposed updates are a visual under reporting violations. It's a visual included to summarize the process of completing a DASIT investigation. And that's on page 16. That is not new information. It's not a new practice. But it is a little flow chart that helps, I think, families. It helps staff, it helps students understand. I made a DASIT complaint or a dignity for all students act complaint around bullying or harassment. What happens next? And it really walks you through what those steps are. Again, we kept the wording within the policy, but we thought that that visual was helpful. And the second proposed change is in the area of dress code. And we actually reviewed and proposed to adopt City Bosse's Code of Conduct language for their dress code section. And that includes specification of the purpose and values behind the dress code and being mindful of cultural expression. We just, a lot of people had been pointing out that City did some nice work around their language and making sure that it was specific enough that we were avoiding bias when we were looking at the dress code and working with students. So you can see on page 10 and 11 that there is kind of a little introduction to the dress code, goals for the dress code. And that's divided into all students must wear, all students may wear, and students cannot wear, which I think just makes it a little bit more explicit and easier to understand for families and students. The basic principles still apply that certain body parts must be covered, undergarments must be covered. But again, the language we felt like was a little bit more specific and culturally appropriate.
How do kids feel about this?
This was, they were thrilled with this change. I will say our student advisory, School Culture Student Advisory, actually came together initially out of dress code concerns two years back. I remember it was the beginning of the year and they understood that there were rules around dress code and they were okay with that. But they wanted a voice in that and they felt that this language really represented their feelings around that. And so it was, it was nice to see the students come together and value those changes.
I only have one question related to dress code. Is there anything built in to any, that our students get that would help them understand about work dress codes, which is significantly different than what we're proposing for school dress code?
Yes. So I think there are two different, at the younger, younger grades, our SEL, our social, emotional learning curriculum talks a lot about, they don't use the term code switching, but that's the word that's coming to my mind, where it's appropriate to have behaviors at home that may be different than your behaviors at school, that may be different than your behaviors at the mall or the grocery store for younger students. As they progress developmentally, it's the same for your school behaviors or dress, your work behaviors or dress. That we, as humans in our society, we have to have that skill of being able to switch. We probably speak differently at the dinner table than we do at board meeting. And that's a skill that we have. So that's something that we work on with our students through our social, emotional learning curriculum. learning curriculum. At the high school level, there is a lot of work done through our school counselors and other career, college and career supports that work work with them on all of those career readiness skills, and dress and professionalism is certainly one of those.
I just think it would be important for the community to know that 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 exists as part of their, the learning program. I I think people will be less apt to panic about how our dress code reads if they understand that we are teaching there is a difference, how you present, how you present yourself in a in a work situation, or a situation, say they're invited somewhere to perform.
Absolutely.
So just so that they know that our our students, we are addressing those things, but we aren't enforcing those things on a daily basis.
Correct. And and some of the conversation that we had in in different groups and meetings was that this doesn't mean that we shouldn't be having the conversations with students, it means we shouldn't be disciplining them for, you know, if they're not dressed the way that I I think is a kind of professional dress, discipline probably isn't the answer, but kind of coaching and conversation with them would be appropriate. And that is something that came up in in all of our meetings.
That makes, that makes sense to me, so I'm I'm good with, but I think the community would feel much better if somehow they knew and understood that that's the direction we're going. In other words, what I see here is trying to allow the students to be comfortable throughout their school day, their learning process, which I, that's fine, but we just can't give up that piece of where they need to understand that there's, sometimes their comfortability is not appropriate for certain settings.
Yes.
In other words, coming to a board meeting in my pajamas wouldn't be appropriate, or, you know, I I wouldn't feel comfortable in sweatpants, but, yeah.
Well, and that, that brings me to, again, this is not a policy change, but something that came out of these meetings was really, students especially, said, we need to find a way to get this out in a more relevant manner to students and to to all stakeholders, to our community. Right now, again, we have a forty-something page document, that's a lot of jargon to a lot of people. And while it's important to have as policy, they were talking about videos that they would like to help create briefs, you know, one-page briefs that could go home, could be shared with the student body, and so they're excited to be to be working on that throughout the school year. They've actually asked to launch a task force to do kind of a deeper dive with our code and and.
Our kids ask for much too?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's impressive, I I like hearing that.
And the only other thing that is not included yet, but you will likely be seeing as an amendment this coming school year, is that we need to have a more focused discussion on addressing the use of artificial intelligence, such as chat, GPT, we're having that language in our code. It was just brought up a week or two ago, and I just felt like we didn't have the time to to have the conversation we needed before tonight. So I did ask that the committee come back together so that we can adopt some language, because that's ever-changing. Any other questions?
If there's no other questions, I just want to say say to you, Liz, I've enjoyed getting to know you, and I've enjoyed the work that you've brought forward to the board, that you've done with all of our students and staff. And I believe you will be greatly missed. I want to wish you well, and thank you for the time that you spent here, and I know you gave your heart and soul to helping our students and staff grow in very positive ways. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Liz, nice job. Next on our agenda is the monthly operations and finance report for May two thousand twenty-three. Dr. Lucian, team?
Thank you, it's my pleasure. I'll ask Ms. Tiviasi to do this first.
So the first thing I want to note about the financials is that they are on a month lag, so we're going to be looking at May's numbers instead of June's. As you can see here, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had about sixty-seven million dollars in revenue. This year, we have almost seventy-one. Last year, we had sixty-one million dollars in expenditures, and this year, we have a profit of sixty-three million. The big thing to know here is that the percentages and the proportions are consistent year to year. So eighty-eight percent revenue is collected at this point last year versus ninety this year. All expenditures are on par at eighty percent. On the next slide, there is one thing I want to note, so if you're asking, why is it that we're in May, but we're only having eighty percent of our expenditures in? That drop in the cash flow that's indicated represents documents that are due in the middle of June, and they are very sizable. So that's, you know, why we have that slight lag in those expenditures. Cash flow-wise, we're doing very well. The gray line is our actual expenditures, the orange line is our projections. So you can see that our actual cash balance is very close to what we projected at the beginning of the school year, and we're not really having any trouble financing any of our bills or student activities. And that is pretty much everything I have for you tonight. Any questions?
So for the visual, are we looking, I mean comparatively, I know the numbers are different, but are we looking better this year than last year?
We have a much more sizable cash flow this year, largely because of the foundation aid increase that we recognized in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We'll also see an increase in the twenty-three, twenty-four, because at that point, we'll be fully funded for our foundation aid, and then it should start to level off, and we should see more consistencies year to year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Tim, when you look at the, when you look at the data, it's, it's, the lines aren't as as spiky. So the work, it, you know, the cash flows matching up, the bills are getting paid, it tells me, it, it, you know, what's coming in is going out, as it should. And we're not seeing, you know, spikes where something, it looks like something happened. So just.
I take it you've seen those from all your years before?
I've seen, I've seen it here and there, and wasn't, it made me a little uncomfortable, but I just wanted to, since you asked the question and you can't see the chart, I thought that that might help you understand what we were looking at.
You know, what I would say, and we've been talking, I've been talking to business office, and one of the things we're monitoring closely is, we're looking at coming in, you know, with a little bit of revenue over what we anticipate, which is good, good news. Less than we anticipated, I think, four to five months ago, we thought we were going to come in around seven fifty, eight hundred, I believe, is where we were at. Now we're looking in the two hundreds. Our medical cost is something we need to watch and and keep an eye on. It's been an interesting change for us this year, you know, so it's something we're watching very closely, especially with the anticipated fiscal cliff, the number of years coming up. We have to keep a real good eye on our medical expenses, and then also, you know, we need to keep an eye on what the state's doing, because the last thing we want to see is a freeze, you know, because that's exactly what happened to small city school districts and high poverty districts and low wealth, and it's exactly what we are, and they've got to fix that formula. So I think that's something we need to watch. We haven't talked a lot about, but the healthcare, for the first time, that number's picked up on us a little bit this year, for the first time. It happened one other time, it bumped, and then it kind of came down. So that's a little bit different. I don't know if you want to comment on that at all, Ms. Tiviasi?
Yes, so we have had a very expensive plan year this year. The swing is in the millions of dollars, not the hundreds of thousands. So that is definitely hard to accommodate within our budget, because we do tend to run our budgets at ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, very tight, so that we're not, you know, charging the taxpayers for more than we need to. That said, one of the things that we have been looking at are those fluctuations, and I know we've been talking on the insurance committee about some things we can do, you know, to smooth those out as much as we can. At this point, though, the fluctuations we're seeing are being accommodated within the general fund budget, without cutting anything towards programs. So we do build in a little bit of a buffer to account for those years where they are higher, but, you know, again, within a reasonable amount, so that we're not overcharging anybody. And I did want to know as well, that in the fund balance and reserve plan that you were given, it does show years of expenditures for the health insurance plan alongside all of our fund balances and unassigned balances.
So a year ago, we were talking about underspending by about a couple million dollars, and here, and that's why I wanted to point that out to you. That's a big difference that we saw, that's a big swing in a year.
It is, and one of the things that we are looking at is that some of these claims may be associated with COVID catch-up claims.
Oh, okay.
You know, so our insurance, NVR insurance managers, they're looking at, are these claims going to sort of fall off, or is it a continued cost that we should expect? The district does have stop-loss insurance, so at a certain point, if the claims exceed a certain dollar value, if it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we do have insurance to protect us from those costs being borne by the district.
So the committee does a good job monitoring, but I wanted to, if anybody was thinking, well, a year ago, we were here, yeah, I just wanted to point out, there's, that's a pretty significant swing in it, and I think the insurance company and the business office does a really nice job monitoring this and keeping it tight. But that's a, that's a simple example of how simp, how things can swing, so we're we're monitoring, but I wanted to bring that to your attention.
And healthcare works that way, it's been, it's been that way.
That's correct, and we're self-insured, of course.
We're self-insured, and so which gives us a little bit more control than what we used to have. That's why we went self-insured.
Yep, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, because that that explains, you're like, why are they, that's the big swing. If you were saying, what has changed the most, that's something, but every year, that's happened one other time since I've been here. So it's, again, what's the time we've been right, we've been under? But when you get a swing, people see that, and they're like, what's going on? But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, that we're monitoring that very closely.
Very good.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot there, Ms. Tiviasi. Thank you, and Dr. Lucian, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, and the final item on the superintendent's reports, mascot logo branding update. Just want to thank the the advisory committee that started working back in December, we formed it, we've had meetings since January, I believe we had eight or nine meetings, we had multiple surveys that went out, and all of that work, in collaboration, started working with the fourth to twelfth grade student district culture team that also, Ms. Tiffany had mentioned them. So what a great committee to be able to work with as well. So thank you to those two groups, which culminated in a survey that went out in early June with Red Dragons versus Eagles as the final two, and it came out Red Dragons sixty-eight, or sixty-one point two percent, to Eagles thirty-eight point eight percent. So Red Dragons will be the direction that we're going. The next step will be to, and you know, I'm trying to figure out a way, and we're going to figure out a way, to, I'd like to get the kids involved this summer, start working on this, you know, and some of the feedback is, can we get working on this sooner than later? The press release that'll go out tomorrow will talk about that we want to have really student-driven, the ideas that are coming out and generated, working closely with the committee, the advisory committee, as well as the culture committees as well, and really working with Citi PR, helping us pull it together, really taking the ideas that the kids generate, drawings that the kids come up with, and really turning them and making them into graphically depicting what they're doing. So really, the students' work, getting them in, that's what, that's what my vision is in this direction. So the next step is, now that we we would bring this, you know, to the board down the red, to, we need to to go through the process, which we already did, which was indicating that to the state, we're not going to be doing Red Raiders anymore. Next step would be bringing Red Dragons forward as the, as the, as the recommendation, and then obviously working on all of the iconology and all the things that will go on and parameters for, that we work with and such. So the next step is the actual design of the of the Red Dragon.
The only thing, how are you going to get to all the students so they all know they have an opportunity?
Well, that's what we were figuring out, because some of the people, because I also in the press release, it talks about that this work may go into the fall. And so I want to make sure, there are opportunities, and and this is what I need to work with my team on, that was some of the feedback that I got late this afternoon, was I wish I'd gotten that before, you know, but again, that was one of my concerns. I was hoping we would have been doing what we're saying today, we would have been doing at the May meeting, and spending the month of June. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. And you know what? I think that was the right thing, we took our pace and paced it out. But I think we have an opportunity to reach out, I think we can use our different modalities to really get the word out. We do have a lot of kids in the summer, and what I was thinking about is maybe we identify a day or two where we had kids come in and spend the day working with the team that are really interested in doing that, in generating ideas, but I need to, we need to kind of flush that out a little bit.
And if we can't reach our students, are we going to hold off to the fall?
Well, I think we need to. This is driven by kids. I have a real, that's very clear, from day one in this process, when we got to this part in the process, in the final identification, coupled with the actual renditions of what we're going to be considering, they have to come from the kids.
Without having a Chromebook, I, I, because we, we take them back for the summer, that makes me very nervous about every student having the opportunity.
Yeah, so that's why, again, that's why, again, that was part of my thinking as well, that some of the questions have come up, do we want to get, again, you know, I think we've, we've had a measured process through this, I think when you compare us to many other districts, because I do pay attention to what's going on, we have spent more time, I think we've been more measured with our process, and now I think we need to continue that path as we have. And sometimes you go too fast, and it's, you know, it's too fast. We need to go with the process.
Consistencies, we've always said the students have been.
That's right, and we've been, we've been true to our process, we've been sticking right with the process as we go along. So we'll, we'll put it out there, in worst case scenario, we're still actually getting a lot of ideas rolling into the fall.
Brian?
Yep.
When will we officially vote to confirm that that will be the new mascot? Will we do that before we actually have an image drafted, or are you hoping to do it all in one big package?
Well, I would love to do it all in one package. I think it would, you know, again, I don't know what the board, you know, would like to do. We could bring it forward, because we've gone through the the part where we've done what we need to do for the state part, that we're not going to use Red Raiders, that was done in the thirteenth. If we want to move forward, we could do it two separate things, we could do an acceptance of Red Dragons, and then a further acceptance when we go into the fall, or whenever it's ready, October, September, whenever, whenever the case may be, that then we do a, except of the actual iconology that we use.
And you only, you have only three board members here tonight, so I don't know.
So we could have that conversation, that are July twelve.
We're definitely going to have to make decisions later, not tonight.
Well, not, no.
No, I mean, as far as what, what are, we have to have all of our future board members.
Tonight, it was really to say, this is where we're at, and next steps are really in the development and the design.
Well, you have one, then we'll give you four, but I think you probably won't.
No, I think you want.
No, we would definitely want to leave that for the other side here.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's only two weeks away.
There you go.
It's not a, yeah, thank you. And I did want to say, before I get the, the mic back, because that's the mascot logo branding, I just make sure I hit all my notes here as well. Yep, I just want to extend, extend my appreciation to Dave and Robin. You know, David and Tim are the last two that gave me this absolutely amazing opportunity, and I'm forever grateful to every board member that gave me that, but you two have been with me my seven years. So thank you, and Dave, thank you for, you know, you're the president, first two years, you're the president when I was selected, so thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. There are days I'm like, hmm, but it's been a great one, and I appreciate all the knowledge and and guidance that you've given me. You bring the administrative experience, and you and I really relate, and I'm looking forward to to maybe still picking your brain as we move on. And then Robin, I still remember my first evaluation with you.
Sorry.
And it, and it, but it was the moment of time when it was one of the most open and honest conversations anybody's ever had with me in thirty-three years.
This seems to be the theme tonight.
But what it did was, you both, you both, the result is, I'm a better administrator, I'm a better leader, and I think I'm in better position just to deal with all sorts of people and be there for every, it's reinforced my work with every child, every day.
Well, you can get a T-shirt now that says, I survived Robin.
So I do, I appreciate, you both are pivotal in in bringing us this seven years, and my leadership, and I'm hoping to, maybe after, now that you're not my bosses anymore, maybe we'll break bread and have an opportunity to really also talk just about education and things in general. So thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart.
You're welcome.
You both have made a huge difference in my experience here and in my life, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Back to you.
Thank you. All right, so would you like to move item four point zero one to accept the financial reports?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Item four point zero two to approve budget transfers.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Item four point zero three to accept a donation from the New York State Bus Contractors Association for a scholarship that they donated to?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Item four point zero four to accept a donation from Golden Sun Bus Service for the Roger Week Scholarship, same scholarship. Any discussion?
Move, fine.
Got a moment, oh, excuse me. Would someone move it?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Item four point zero five, the fund balance resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Item four point zero six to accept the appropriation of a tax subsidiary reserve?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Item four point zero seven to approve the transportation contract?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Pass five zero zero. New business, five zero point zero one, approve the committee on special education recommendations?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Item six point zero one through six point three one are our personnel, would you like to badge?
Five, five.
Oh, I didn't, excuse me, my bad. Item five point zero two, approve resolution to reschedule the Board of Education reorganization meeting?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstentions? Pass five zero zero. Now, would you like to badge items six point zero one through six point three one, which are all of our personnel resolutions this evening?
Move it.
Move, second.
Is there any discussion on any of those resolutions?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations, I'll give that to you.
Yes, congratulations is very good. Thanks, Dave. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstentions? Pass five zero zero. This brings us to the board forum. Dave, would you like to kick us off?
Gosh, just thanks for all the very nice comments tonight, thanks for the reports. It's been interesting watching the logo conversation progress, so I'm eagerly waiting to see what the final product will be.
Very nice.
And thank you, Robin, and this board, it's been a pleasure serving with all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crandall?
Oh, I want to thank all our presenters, speakers, I want to thank Dave, been a pleasure serving with you, now you can ride your bike more. And Robin, thank you. Now you can warm up the rocking chair on the porch. And that's it.
That hurt.
I'm sorry. That was a good one.
Yes, it was. This is Al Gore.
It's kind of hard to follow up after this wonderful. David, thank you so much for everything that I've learned from you over the last six years. I know that I've had the opportunity to pick your brain a time or two. And Robin, same thing. I, I've become a better board member because of the both of you and the history that you have. And Robin, you go way back, and you've answered questions that I didn't even know I had. David, you probably didn't either. Know that I will probably be calling if I ever have a history question.
I think Robin was there when they dedicated hearing street.
Maybe we spill a bit tonight. But I am thankful for my time spent with the two of you these last six years. I have, I've learned a lot. So, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
And Ms. Tiffany, is this your last board meeting with us?
This is my last.
Well, congratulations. Enjoy your next adventure. We will miss you greatly. And it'll be interesting to see where the kids take us on the logo journey. I can't wait to see what they come up with. We have a lot of talent here in our district, so I know it will be hard for us to make some, some decisions between what they put forth in front of us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Connors?
Like to reiterate, I thought all the presentations were great tonight, and thank you for explaining the different pieces that I wasn't quite catching up on. You know, sometimes explaining those graphs though really helps me visualize in my head that we're on the right track. Ms. Tiffany, you will be seriously missed by me. I know I had my mother reread the paper. I said, "I'm not reading this right." So, I just, you know, I've been with you through planning, through now as a board member, and I really appreciate everything you've been able to do with the district. And when it comes to Mr. Cordone and Robin, both of you have really helped me grow this year, my first year on the board, and I've learned a lot from questions, different ways I can contribute more, and overall, just how to be a better member of the community and serve because of your leadership. And Robin, you know, specifically when you came to me and said, "Tim, I think this would be a great thing for you." And, you know, I'm really here because of you, and you've really mentored and stuck with me the whole way, and I hope you know I'm not letting that go. You're gonna be my first call probably every time. You know, I don't know if that's protocol, but you're probably gonna get every first call, because you really helped me grow. You always seem to have the answer, and you're always willing to give your time, no matter which one of us board members called, even administration staff, anybody. You're willing to lend a year and provide your insight, and you've got a lot of it at this point, so we really appreciate it. So, thank you both, and that's me for tonight.
Thank you, Tim. I want to start off with graduation was wonderful. My compliments to everyone involved in making graduation such a nice event. I, I just think we do a great job here in Fulton, and the focus is on our students. It's not on anybody else but our students, and I can honestly say that's not necessarily the case everywhere else. And I really appreciate that we dedicate our focus to our students and allow their families to have that time to be proud of their kids and watch their kids shine. So, I really enjoyed it, as always, and to me, that's the highlight of the school year, getting to see the success of our kids, which is why we come here all these Tuesdays, is hoping that we contribute in some small way towards that achievement. I want to thank all of my colleagues here at this table for serving so generously with me. David, I wish you well. I thank you for the many years of service. We've had a great number of years of service. I thank you for stepping up, for the many times that you traveled to the lobby events, which are stressful sometimes.
An experience.
Stressful, yes. There, there you go, an experience. But I appreciate that. It, it's above and beyond, very necessary, especially in our early years, when our, it seemed like our primary focus was just begging for resources so that we could make a lot less happen. I've, I've just felt very blessed these last few years for what we've been able to do when we haven't had to beg. To everyone here in administration, I appreciate all of your efforts in teaching me. I, I learn something new all the time, to working with me and having patience for my questions, for having patience for listening to my thoughts, whether you wanted to hear them or not, but you were kind enough to listen. I'm grateful for that. And although they're not here, to our teachers and their support staff in all our buildings, what they do every day for our kids makes my heart full. I wa, I've watched teachers over the years, just on impromptu visits, that are so engrossed in working with young people and trying to make their day a good day, and trying to make certain that they leave knowing a little bit more than what they came in that day with. And above and beyond that, has, over these last several years, our teachers have always been kind and looked out for Fulton students. But these last few years, I mean, everybody is going above and beyond to make sure our kids are emotionally as well as they can be when they're in our care, and trying to make that difference so that they can feel safe and they can feel cared for all the time. I can't tell you how much that means to me, knowing that some of our kids don't get enough of that. And I would say that's true of anybody that's an educator. It, it's just a wonderful thing that you all do, and you folks behind the scenes that you support our people to be able to do that. So, please continue to give them that support. They need it. And Brian, get out and visit the schools. It'll lift your heart, and it'll make your job easier every day when you go and see those kids. Man, they say some of the interesting, most interesting things, and make you pause as an adult to say, you know, "Why didn't I think of that?" Or, you know, "I've been too busy, and they just broke it down for me. I need to slow, slow down a minute, and I need to think about their viewpoint of how, what life looks like." And they need that from us. They need us to remember what they're looking at. So, if you can do that, that would be a great legacy. I don't know who's gonna check bathrooms. Mr. Crandall, maybe you could take that over for me.
I thought it was Ms. Mainville.
Well, I don't care. I, it's just somebody keep track of, you know, keep track of the restrooms. And last but not least, my Batman, Mrs. Perry, you have been a great partner, and you've helped me immensely as I transitioned from pen and paper to doing things online, which was a new experience these last six years, and you made it seem easy. Can't thank you enough for making it easy.
You're a good team.
You, you've been very good to me. You make me look like I know what I'm doing, and I, I thank you for that, because I can make myself look pretty foolish without trying very hard. So, that's all of that, and I am not gonna say anymore, except that I deeply, deeply care for this district and everyone in it, and I wish you all well going forward. So, this brings us to the second public forum. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board on topic on tonight's agenda?
No, I'm already crying.
Okay. You didn't have to cry. Okay, there's no takers for that. So, someone would move item 7.03 for executive session?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, and abstentions. Pass 5. Are you serious or not? Okay, 500. That was just a joke. So, it passed, and we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll go into executive session and...
Down to room 10.
Okay, room 10, down, down around the corner.
Yep.
So...
You're gonna miss this.
Yes.
The never knowing what Mr. Crandall's gonna say.
No, he'll miss it a little bit. Then he'll say...
I'll ride my bike. I don't care what Mr. Crandall says tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I don't know if it'll.